Please stand. I call this portion to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised that a bench of a fire emergency alarm will sound. Please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone please turn your phones to silence and thank you for your cooperation. We are going to start the meeting with additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. Mr. Malasani?
Yes, under additions five, two, three, five, nine, ten, general fund warrants, school fund warrants, federal warrants, CSE recommendations, extra class treasury report, and under eleven, twelve, under personnel, appointment of a long-term substitute special education teacher.
Thank you. We're moving on to item number four, administration of oath. We will be administering the oath to Dr. Chanel in anticipation of her starting her superintendency February first. Sue, could you please do that?
I certainly can. Please stand, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Rebecca Chanel, do solemnly swear.
I, Rebecca Chanel, do solemnly swear.
As of February one, twenty twenty-five, I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
As of February first, twenty twenty-five, I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next, moving on to the consent agenda. One through ten, resolved at the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following consent agenda items, one through ten. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we're going to move on to communications. As we just saw Dr. Chanel take her oath, we have a transition period going on here at Caladonia, and that means that this is Mr. Malasani's last board meeting with us. And I could not let that moment go, um, go by without doing nothing. And I invited some of his family here. I'm not sure any of his family's been here for a board meeting, probably outside of maybe a championship or...
Never.
I didn't even recognize him.
It's a bittersweet night for us. Bob's been at the helm as our superintendent for fourteen years. He's been with the district for twenty-five. And over those years, he has led us with some fantastic leadership and has been very stoic in doing that. And thinking about a way in which we, as a board, could sort of honor that for Mr. Malasani, I thought about statistics. And I did Bob's career stats, or some of your career stats as superintendent. Tonight is going to be your two-hundred-and-sixth board meeting as superintendent. I know it only feels probably like five. You started as superintendent on July first, twenty-eleven. If you're wondering how many days that is, Bob, on the thirty-first of January, you'll have been superintendent four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four days. I had that number going through my head all day. You have led us through three capital projects, or, I'm sorry, you have led us through two start-to-finish capital projects, twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen, and you have started the twenty-twenty-five capital project. Along with that, since twenty eighteen, you have done a capital outlay project every year, and that is seven capital outlay projects. You've developed thirteen budgets with the district and the board. There's been twenty-three section-five championships, one as you were superintendent. Five hundred thirty-three students enrolled in pre-K during your superintendency, and eight hundred forty-six students graduated. You saw thirteen graduating classes. These statistics are just a piece of your influence, Mr. Malasani. You've led the district through many successes in challenging times. Your stoic and reliable leadership has been much appreciated. I can't say enough good things about you, and I'm going to keep this brief and pass it to the board so I don't get too sentimental. This is a... I appreciate it. Is there any other words from the board?
Can I?
Absolutely.
I'd like to repeat, you probably all don't know, so I just wanted to tell you this. I told my board members this story a little while ago. I had my kids home for a number of years when I was homeschooling them. Steven and Christopher came back into school in sixth and eighth grade, and that was two thousand one. And so they had just started back in school in September of two thousand one, and then September eleventh came. And their older brother, Mark, was over in New York City, at Cooper Union, as a freshman in college. And when all this happened, I wanted to be able to tell Steven and Christopher that their brother was okay. And so I guess, I mean, I don't remember this part really that much, but I guess I called over at the school and I said, can somebody find them someplace and tell them that Mark's okay? And I found out later, well, from them, that Mr. Malasani had gone to the cafeteria to find Steven and Christopher to tell them that their brother was okay. And that just meant the world to me. Thank you.
Well, now that you gave me chills, I had heard that once before, and it doesn't surprise me for a second. I've had the pleasure of being with this man for all of his twenty-five years, and it's been a pleasure. if you asked me what I would think or what I would say, or, he's become a friend. Bob is a friend of mine. Yes, we're colleagues, yes, I was president for nine or ten years, yes, I could call him, yes, I did the business from Syracuse for eleven of seventeen years, and I could always, I could always count on Bob. The whole district could count on Bob for anything. He wore a hundred different hats, but to, to, to say he's going to be missed is, uh, it's an understatement, because he's, he's the only one. He's, he... His shoes are going to be hard to fill, but, but, but you can just count on him. I'd be working on, I was in construction for several years at several different places, and the name Malasani would come up, and, oh, he's, he's your superintendent, right? It's not, these are people like from area code three-on-five. It's like, how do they know who Bob is? And when I was trying to come up with like some official words this morning, and, because as my wife said, you can't just sit there and talk, because you won't shut up. My go-to, I have, there's Ronald Reagan, John F. Kennedy, and Jerry Garcia are my three go-to guys. And I found something that Jerry wrote in nineteen eighty-three. Bob, he wrote this, and he wrote this about you.
I'm sure he did.
If you are able to enjoy something, to devote your life to it, or reasonable amount of time and energy, it will work for you. This suggests that dedication and passion towards something you love, essentially hard work, will lead to positive outcomes. This district, this district, for twenty-five years, we got the positive outcomes. We were the beneficiary of all of these positive outcomes. And in my parting notes, I just, I just want, I want to ask God to bless Bob and his family for every step and every direction your next life takes you, west, north, south, or east. You've got a tremendous family, and you guys, you guys know, you guys know what you got. And we do too. So I, I, I'll hung you later. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. Thanks, John. I couldn't have said it better. Bob, I will put an end to this for your sake. Our technology teacher and class have made this nice plaque for you in honor of your twenty-five years of service, and I'd like to present it to you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, I'm not going to actually do a speech, because I usually, we're due the boards or, so just real quick, obviously, you know, John used the go-to, so the go-to people The people that make me tick, these kids, when you're superintendent, you make a lot of tough decisions, and not everybody likes them. I always got my standing, my goal, sitting in the classroom, and said, why did I get into this business thirty-three years ago? And it was for kids. And obviously, you don't always make, you make the best decision you can. People don't always look at it as the right decision, but when you look at it collectively and how it impacts everybody, and how things grow tentacles and so forth, you got to be able to put your head on a pill and sleep at night. And I worked very hard with so many talented staff members, teachers, our support staff members. Board of Education has allowed me to grow professionally, and for that, I will be forever grateful. The best decision I made was back in nineteen ninety-nine in November, when they offered me the job to come here and be middle school principal. Professionally, it's been the best thing I could ever imagine, best education I could provide for my children, and wouldn't miss it. But thank you. It's been an absolute honor and privilege to serve this district, and I know this, you are in great hands with Dr. Chanel and your leadership with the team of the adults that you have here caring for our children and the support our community provides our school district. I think we are going, I know we will continue to flourish. And with that, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malasani. We will move on to correspondence. We'll start with Raider Points of Pride.
So it's so hard to get this figured out. The annual elementary winter band and chorus concert was a success despite a surprise snow day. The concert showcased students' musical talents and the dedication of their teachers. Families and community members filled the middle high school auditorium in support.
The elementary school family crafting night kicked off hometown holidays. Families came together in the elementary auditorium for pottery, painting, wooden ornament, and cookie decorating. The evening was made even more special with background music provided by a few of our elementary band and chorus members, adding a magical touch to the crafting activities. Those in attendance sipped hot chocolate and did some last-minute holiday shopping at the book fair. This event exemplified our school's commitment to fostering community engagement and creating opportunities for families to connect at our school, working together and making memories.
Last month, Senator Helming was treated to a performance of the song "Happy" by the elementary fourth and fifth grade chorus. The contemporary hit song was a part of the winter concert program. During the senator's visit, the elementary school also presented their new STEAM program. Fourth-grade students demonstrated their bridge-building project and explained how they use coding concepts to complete it.
Our middle school math team took second place at the Genesee Valley Voces Math Competition.
We had the privilege of hosting Senator Pam Helming, New York State Senator, for the fifty-fourth district. We showcased our art, career, and tech, STEAM, physical education, and music programs. The senator concluded her visit with the class of twenty-twenty-five as they engaged in question-and-answer session.
I'm sorry. Mr. Malasani, that's why you're here. Twenty-twenty-five hosted our thirty-second annual seniors for seniors event. The evening was highlighted by performances from our cheerleaders, jazz band, and rock band, vocal numbers by senior Ryan Murdock and freshman Abby Hunt, and of course, some great jokes. Our amazing Raider Cafe staff cooked up a delicious dinner, which was served by the class of twenty-twenty-five. Smiles, laughs, and a wonderful time was had by all.
The middle school page turners won their chapter-two match, and the high school chorus hosted the Potsdam Pointer Counts, SUNY Potsdam's premier albasso a cappella group with voices ranging from tenor to bass, bass bass, and a Calmum twenty-twenty-three alum, Tommy Murdock, who is a sophomore music major. The counts put on an impressive, nonstop, forty-five-minute performance in our auditorium and finished by answering questions, sharing their journeys, and talking music.
We are thrilled to announce that three of our Raiders have been selected to perform in the Rochester Philharmonic Orchestra's twenty-twenty-four Gala Holiday Pops Concert. Congratulations to Hannah Harmon, Laura Reynolds, and Ryan Years. We hosted the mentor finale for our sixth-grade and senior mentor program.
We are excited to announce this year's Caladonia VFW post one zero eight four four Patriots Pen S.A. winners. First place, Logan Ashley. Second place, Rosalyn Strub. Third place, Caitlin Wiley.
And the varsity boys' basketball and cheerleading teams had their home debut as we hosted Danceville on Camp Good Days and Special Times Teddy Bear Toss Night.
Congratulations to senior Hazel Nickerson, who secured her one-thousandth rebound in the varsity girls' sixty-three to thirty-seven victory over Wheatland Schiling. Of note is that Hazel also is a thousand-plus points, so that's not uncommon.
And also in your board package, you have the honor roll for December twenty twenty-four, sixty-two percent of our kids earn the honor roll, high honor roll, in grades nine through twelve. Also, Nikki Flint, tonight was, actually, yesterday morning, but tonight it aired, was the apple, golden apple award. So congratulations to Nikki Flint. Also, this Friday, Congressman Holly and Congresswoman Bailey will be joining Dr. Chanel and I at Calmum at ten o'clock. So we're not having a full-fledged presentation as you did with Pam Helming, so close to Regents exams, but we are going to have her tour of the district and share some of our legislative objectives. As well, this Saturday at ALBA, our legislative committee from the board and myself and Dr. Chanel will be working with all our legislators at ALBA for legislative practice. So those are some of the things that are happening.
Thank you. There's no formal guests of the board tonight, but we, as a district, like to honor our seniors by asking them, we have seniors joining us from government class. Welcome, and thank you for coming. We'd like to ask you, if you haven't been to a meeting before, if you're comfortable introducing yourself and maybe saying a little bit about what your plans are. We understand that plans are not solidified right now, and you may not have any, and that's okay. But if you're comfortable introducing yourself, we would like that.
Hi, I'm Kate McAlwin, and I plan to go to Almira College next year for pre-dentistry studies.
I'm Maya Roger, and I plan to go to the Anderson University in South Carolina for Biology General Studies.
I'm Mackenzie Richard, and I plan to go to college for child psychology.
I'm a former minor, and I plan to go to cosmetology in Cosmology.
Brianna Lynn, and I plan to go to college for biomedical sciences.
Oh, I'm Lily Conrad, and I plan to go to college for marine biology.
I'm Marvin Young, and I plan to go to UC next year.
Charles Maine, I'm not going to college.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is public forum. We have one person signed up, Mr. Rich Lookie. Public forum is next. This portion of the agenda is for district residents, district staff, and/or parents, guardians of students to speak to the board. However, the board members will not respond. This is a time for the board to listen, and when appropriate, responsibly. Individuals who wish to speak must sign in, state their name and address prior to speaking, and limit their comments to three minutes. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice are not tolerated. Mr. Rich Lookie.
I promise I won't swear. Hello, my name is Arnie Rich Lookie. I like to do things by protocol, so I would have liked to join in with my buddies here, but officially, I couldn't, so I had to do it this way. And then to continue the little vocals. Thanks, Liz, for letting me know about tonight, and also, congrats to the good doctor. Good luck in your endeavors. You will, as always, be great. First, I would like to apologize to the board for not running for another term. In the last three-hundred-sixty-five days, I've had about three-hundred various trumpet gigs. So it's, live music is alive again. I couldn't commit enough time to the board because of that, but I truly miss you folks. Secondly, I just wanted to say congratulations to Bob Malasani as a wonderful, of his wonderful career. He led this school to become extremely successful. I was there to approve him to become superintendent, and was always so glad I did. He is all for the students, and I always appreciated that. He was always there for student activities, and it brought the best out of them when he would show up. The big football guy trying to squeeze into a little auditorium seat just to see a concert or a musical, it's pretty awesome. I'll never forget his compassion for those poor kids that passed away at the North Road intersection years ago. I'll never forget his compassion for me when I lost my parents. I'll always appreciate his friendship and how our families of three kids apiece paralleled here at Calmum. Mixing in professionalism and working with him on the school board along with our friendship was the perfect recipe you will only find in a wonderful, small community such as ours. Good luck to you, Bob, and just think, no, you can run for school board, may.
Thank you, Arnie.
Thank you.
Before going to old business, I promised Julie that I would give her a way out, unless you all, Mr. Malasani's family, want to stay in for the rest of the business, this would be a nice time to leave. Thank you for coming.
I'll scoot too. Have a good night.
Thanks, Arnie.
Yep.
Safe travels.
We are going to move to old business. Adoption of budget guidelines for the proposed twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual school budget. Mr. Malasani, would you like to put me down?
Yes, so these are guidelines that we put together, follows board policy fifty-one ten, which was a budget planning, and I think there were three or four that were new, as I shared in the previous meeting, is that we simply bundled them a little bit differently, what the board will do, what the administrative team will do, and so forth to meet our mission.
Thank you. Resolved at the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the budget guidelines for the proposed twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual school budget per board policy fifty-one ten budget planning and development. May I have a motion, please?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is carried. Moving on to new business. I am going to put, if the board does not oppose, one through three together. So this is the approval of authorization to hire employees pending board approval as of February one, twenty twenty-five. Approval of authorization for business matters in between board meetings as of February one, twenty twenty-five, and approval of authorization for all other business functions in between board meetings as of February one, twenty twenty-five. And this is for Dr. Chanel or designate me. Mr. Malasani, could you just say a word or two about that?
Yes, real quick, obviously, the first one's pretty self-explanatory, hire employees. There's times where staff members had to leave for whatever reasons, maybe Family Medical Leave Act, or whatever the case may be, where we need to hire a long-term substitute, whatever the case may be. This provides that provision, allows Dr. Chanel, as the board has allowed me for the last, I mean, ten years, to do so. Nothing becomes official until that candidate comes to the Board of Education, and then you officially approve them at the very next meeting. The second one, similar in terms of disauthorizing Dr. Chanel and Mr. Nardone to really have the authority to conduct necessary business matters, whatever they may be, to execute their respective functions during that time period. It's pretty much the same thing with three, in terms of moving transfers and monies and so forth, so that they can operate, you know, in between board meetings. And again, as this board looks and develops relationship with Dr. Chanel, right now, we have one board meeting a month unless you're in the budget season. If you go to two board meetings, you know, I still think these are still necessary, because a lot of things happen within two weeks. That's the provisions there.
All right, new business, one through three. Approval to authorize Dr. Chanel in these capacities. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is carried. Number four, approval of merged boys soccer team. Resolved at the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Shared Services Committee, approve the merged boys varsity JV and modified soccer teams with the Leroy Central School District upon LCAA and section-five approval. The board authorizes the superintendent to fix his signature to a three-year contract. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
So Leroy's Board of Education will also be taking action tonight, should that be approved, which is our anticipation that it will be, we'll have correspondence going out to the student athletes and their parents, stating that all three teams will be merged, and assuring in the backup notes to you, if there are large numbers, other than probably the varsity team, but if there's large numbers at the modified JV team, you probably will have a split team, very similar to what we did with modified football and that merge. But that'll, upon your approval tonight, and Leroy's, we'll have correspondence going out as early as tonight or tomorrow morning, informing parents and student athletes.
Mr. Malasani, are you aware of when the next Shared Services meeting is, or is it, are you and Mr. Merritt trying to get that out of the box?
So Mr. Holly and I will connect tomorrow for, yes, Merritt and Holly. We will connect tomorrow for a date for the Shared Services, board members and administration to come together. We did have an initial meeting, I think it was back in November or December, where we talked about what worked well, what didn't work well, and we went differently in our sports program specifically, that was for cross-country, varsity soccer, and then the football program. So we have now since added modified wrestling to that mix. So originally, in terms of our contract, it says that we meet in the month of November or December, but modified wrestling just started, so we agreed that we would push that off. So I will get that scheduled for the committees, and it'll probably take place by the end of February, the very latest.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number five, approval of intermunicipal agreement as listed. Be it resolved, I'm sorry, yes, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Caladonia Wilford Central School District authorizes the attorneys designated by the ROC to negotiate improved DPAs for software or technology resources, and if being further resolved, the Caladonia Wilford Central School District Board of Education grants the ROC and is designated attorneys the authority to negotiate the terms and conditions of DPAs and take such actions so as to effectuate the purposes and intent of this resolution. Certification is hereby certified as above mentioned. to negotiate the terms and conditions of DPAs and take such actions so as to effectuate the purposes and intent of this resolution. Certification is hereby certified that above mentioned was approved by the Caledonia-Mufford Central School District Board of Education at its meeting held on January 14, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number six, presentation of extra classroom annual audit report. Mr. Nardone, we're going to ask you to do that for us, please.
All right. So every year, our auditors, Mengele Metzgerbar, conduct many different audits for us, one of them being the extra classroom audit. This is an audit of all the school district clubs. So anything from senior class to baseball club, anything that we have that's run by our central treasurer is included in this audit. Our central treasurer is Mrs. Murdock in the high school office, doing a tremendous job, keeping us afloat and making sure that the auditors do not find too much to write us up about in the management letter. I will preference this by saying this, the auditors have to find something. I was an auditor for four years. They think if you don't put anything in the report, they're not justifying their job. So they got to find something. All the stuff they found was very little. So just going through the report really quick, you know, table of contents, their unmodified opinion, qualified opinion on the audit. Then we get to the list of all the different clubs that we have. This will tell you what the beginning balance is as of July 1, 2023, the start of the fiscal year, all the receipts that went in, all the dispersments that went out, and the ending balance as of June 30, which is the end of our fiscal year. At the end, you'll see that number there, the $97,000 that ties out to our bank statement, minus any reconciling items, and it does. Auditors look at that first. If that matches, they know they can continue with their audit. And then just going through, this subsequent event here is based on when the yearbook pays their final bill. So a lot of school districts are run based on an accrual accounting method. Extra class is more of a cash basis. So because their final bill is actually paid at the start of the '24-'25 school year, they want to make mention that, hey, this should have been accounted for in '23-'24. We have it every year. By the time you share up your books and have everything set and ready to pay this bill, it's at the start of the next fiscal year. It's something we've always had, and it's not considered a finding. They just want to bring it to the board's attention. Going through the report a little bit more. So we had two comments in this year's management letter. We had a few instances where sales tax, so unlike the school district, extracurriculars have to pay sales tax on items that are not intended for resale. If they're intended for resale, New York State wants to cut of the bigger pie. So you don't pay it on the purchase, but then when you collect money and actually sell the goods, you're supposed to remit sales tax on those goods sold. The good thing is, with any sales tax comment, you can actually fix this when you do your year-end sales tax tax return. That is done, school district does one for school lunch, and then extra class does one as well. So we're able to fix this. That's usually done around the March timeframe. Second comment is based on raffles. So whenever the auditors see raffle or games of chance, they write it up. They don't want anything in there about, you know, any kind of games of chance. We think that this is not really a raffle. It's just the words used by our advisors. So it's really teaching our advisors to use, you know, not use those words, or pretty much what they are are donations, or they're donation gift baskets that are then given away. It's not actually something that the clubs are buying and then putting in there for games of chance. So those are our two comments. And then the other item in here is the inactive clubs. Anytime that you don't see receipts or dispersments, they'll point it out to the board, hey, it's an inactive club. You might want to look to close it. There's reasons. The two clubs that we had were inactive. Either you can't fill in advisor, or you can't get student involvement for the year. But those clubs are going to be evaluated throughout the current fiscal year to see if they should be closed moving forward. So, and then prior year recommendations, auditors like to tell you when you did something good. So when there was an issue in last year's management letter that is now fixed, they'll actually put in here as a prior recommendation. So you can see what we've corrected from last year's audit. With that, does anybody have any questions? Awesome. And then, did you want me to get into the corrective action plan right away?
Yeah, that's, that's the thing to go through.
So corrective action plan, again, as I mentioned with the sales tax, that's something we're going to look to correct on the year-end sales tax return. And then also with the raffles, we're just going to notify our advisors, please do not use those words, donation, sounds a lot better. And it's something that we definitely don't want to do. So we want to encourage our advisors, you don't want to do games of chance, you don't want to do anything with lotto's or raffles, so make sure that you stay away from that. So that'll all be communicated. I've actually already had the discussion with the central treasurer, and we'll look to get those on the prior year recommendations next audit. And then inactive clubs, as you can see, like I said, throughout this fiscal year, we're going to monitor them to see if they need to be closed, or if they were just inactive one year due to, as I mentioned, tough to find an advisor.
It is sad that there's no science club. Seems like we need a science club.
And then after that is our single audit report. So single audits are only needed if you have more than $750,000 in federal awards, federal money, federal grant money. Usually, starting in 2021 is the first year Calmum actually needed a single audit. The reason is, is because your normal federal grants do not exceed $750,000. But what happened in 2021? We got all that federal stimulus money. That's federal money. So we had to start conducting extra classroom, or single audits, I'm sorry. I think I had mentioned to the board probably two years ago that the single audit will go away once those federal grants are gone. Actually, now that the state allows all schools to be CEP for school lunch, and that means your school lunches are now free for all students, you actually get a lot of federal money through that. So chances are, you're going to have that single audit going forward every year because you're going to get $200,000 to $400,000 alone just off of that school lunch that you wouldn't have gotten if we went back to paid. So single audit's going to be around for probably years to come now. And it's good. As long as that's free for our students, it's the best for our students, and it's actually good for our school lunch fund as well. So again, there are qualified, unqualified opinion and all that is in here. And then we get to the schedule of federal awards. This is all the different grants that the school district has, and the total amount is in that final column right over here. So again, you can see with that art money, $605,000, we used up the rest of art in that year, minus, there was $51,000 that carried over, but pretty much art was used up. And then it'll show you how much we use in food service down here, and then all the section grants and title grants that the district has as well. So you can see, we had a total of just over 1.4 million in federal awards for the '23-'24 school year. At the end, they'll mention, where is it here? Right there, number two and number three. There were no current year findings and no prior year findings. If there are findings in federal audits, sometimes you have to give that federal money back. So you want to make sure you follow your budget. It's not hard. We make sure we do that every year, and the auditors check on that. And pending board approval on all three of these, they will be uploaded to the state portal. It has to be uploaded and submitted by January 15, so that's tomorrow. So I'll upload it and get that submitted. Any questions on any of the audits?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number seven, board resolution to accept the extra classroom annual audit report. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Audit Committee, accept the extra classroom activity fund annual audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, as prepared by Mengele Metzgerbar and Company LLP. Can I have a motion, please?
Yep.
John, second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number eight, extra classroom activity funds corrective action plan. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, accept the extra classroom activity funds corrective action plan for the year ending June 30, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number nine, acceptance of the single audit report. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Audit Committee, accept the single audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, as prepared by Mengele Metzgerbar and Company LLP. Motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number 10, comptroller's audit approval of corrective action plan. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Audit Committee, accept the corrective action plan of the New York State comptroller's audit report. May I have a motion, please?
I move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just so you know the difference, so obviously the comptroller published our report. That's why you don't necessarily have to go through it. With respect to the corrective action plan, we've seen the draft. All of this will also be on our website for community review, as well as sent into the comptrollers tomorrow morning.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we're going to move to executive session. Resolved at the Board of Education adjourn to executive session at 6:40 p.m. to discuss the employment employee history of particular persons, confidential student records protected by FERBA, and collective negotiations with the CMTA. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're going to have Dr. Chanel join us again for executive session, as she has been for the prior two meetings. Hope that the Board of Education returns to regular session at 7:44 p.m. Can I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's carried. We're going to move to personnel, one through 12. One second, please. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, do appointment of coaches, number one. Two, resignation of teacher for purpose of retirement. Three, appointment of Director of Physical Education. Four, approval of substitutes. Five, appointment of middle school, high school interim principal. Six, appointment of middle school, high school interim principal. Appointment of archery club. Eight, appointment of play target club advisor. Nine, approver of school-to-work students. Ten, resignation of teacher for purpose of retirement. And 11, appointment of data protection officer. And 12, appointment of long-term substitute special education teacher. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is carried. We're going to move to adjournment. Resolved at the Board of Education, adjourn the meeting of January 14, 2025, at 7:45 p.m. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is carried. Have a good night.